Good morning. I now call the March 4, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices and remove hats to avoid disturbing others. This work session is a public meeting and as defined in Florida statute or Florida Sunshine Law, the Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meeting and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed in today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form and hand it to the School Board Secretary. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Secretary will call speakers' names in the order they were received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full names and address and dispel their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules. We will now begin our work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Chair Thrower who's with us virtually. Just a very brief update on our vaccinations for our employees that are 50 and older. And I'm going to say this again, all of our, all of our employees 50 and older should have received an email invitation. If, if the employee wishes to participate, we are coordinating efforts thanks to Chad Christensen at Ocala Health and Preston Bolin coordinating opportunities for them to get vaccinated. So I'm asking that as a reminder, all employees, please look for that email. It's due today through the survey. If you are interested, not required, but if you are interested, please respond today by 5:00 p.m. And we are working hard with our great partners to get those scheduled. So I want to thank them for that. 3,012 employees qualify in the 50 and older range. So that's the 50 to 64. As you know, we already did the 65 and older. So we had 3,012 that were in that category. So again, want to thank our partners for their work. And, and that's it for my briefing this morning. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. And now we will begin our work session with our ESE Special Programs and Procedures with Ms. Christina Miller. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Board Members, Vice Chair King, Madam Thrower, Dr. Goett. I'm going to pull up the presentation.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to present the exceptional student education policies and procedures, the process of how we do it, the few areas that were addressed with minor changes. Knowing that we have work to do, even though we have policies in place, I know that there's work to do with communication and training. Okay. So how it works, every three years, the document is opened up by the state for us to look at every area and update every area. And then every year after that, there's certain areas that they open because they require updated data for that year. The document serves as a basis for identification for ESE students, for eligibility determination. It allows us to participate in FESP with weighted funding and apply for idea grants. Areas that were addressed, more restraint and seclusion, multi-tiered system of support, 1% for the Florida State Standards Assessment, alternate assessment, some areas for COVID, and our gifted policies and procedures related to underrepresented. This is our data for restraint and seclusion. We were going in the right direction for restraints and seclusion. If you notice in 1920, we had made positive progress, but also have to consider that we were out of school for six weeks. So the restraints stopped when we were out of school. So that might have been about the same if we were still in school. It's hard to say. We're beginning to look at this year's data and we'll analyze that compared to previous year's data next week. And we'll make some determinations based on needs, whether we need to improve strategies, improve training, employ other strategies other than what we're currently using. We were using a blended model with CPI and TEACH. That's when, the year that our data went up, our restraints went up. And so this year, we took CPI out and are only using TEACH. TEACH is a combination of de-escalation and restraint to training. But we are restraining students too frequently in this county and we need to address that. MTSS is a process for us providing students with interventions that are not performing up to standards or grade level. There's three tiers. Once they get to tier three, ESE becomes involved because the student is suspected of having a disability. And that's at the end of the tier three process is when we get consent to determine eligibility. For these policies, we'd collaborate with Elementary Ed Curriculum Department and Student Services and School Counseling and Assessment. There's a multidisciplinary team committee for MTSS. Though only, our processes didn't change this year, but the language changed. Instead of using specific progress monitoring tools such as AIMS Web, we just used progress monitoring tool, the word progress monitoring tool. So we changed some language so that the process, it's just process language and not specific There's information in there that was requested about interventions and determining gaps. That language was taken from our school assurances about how students are monitored monthly and interventions are provided to help close those gaps. All E.T. goals are also monitored monthly to determine if they're making progress on those. And there's a rule that not more than 1% of your students with disabilities should participate in Florida Standards Alternate Assessment. There is, the state has applied for a waiver for that because the state is, if you see, we're, we're close to the state's average. Our, our reading data was 1.6% of students. The state was 1.5. Our math was 1.7% of students. The state is 1.6. Science was 1.4% of students and the state was 1.6. So because we're above the state, we are in tier two intervention for the state to provide support. And we will be participating in a level two self-assessment for alternate assessment students. We have to provide a justification for why we think it's higher and generally it's due to having a center school. A lot of districts don't have a center school for students with significant disabilities and being close to a teaching hospital. A lot of families with students with significant disabilities move to this area.
So because we're above the state, we are...
As part of the self-assessment, they look at disproportionality. So we look at our subgroups and the percentage of students who are being disproportionately provided with the FSAA. And we are not currently disproportionate in that area right now, but we monitor the data two times annually and provide ESE specialist training. We were required this year to put in information about school closures. We had a plan when school closed last week on how we will serve students in a crisis. And we, we have a system where we would develop a distance learning plan, which is an agreement between the service providers and the parents on how those services would be provided during that crisis. Data is collected on all of that. And this happened immediately after the closures. Students were not without services during the closures. There may be pockets where students, for whatever reason, didn't receive their services. And as they have their annual review meetings, those are being addressed on how to make that up. As in the, the spring assurances related to compensatory education, we have stated that we continue to provide the full panoply of services, which we, we did. We provided all therapies that students had, ESE teacher services. So those were made through the distance learning plan. During, for compensatory education, we have to have a plan on how we were addressing that if students didn't receive services. For example, if a student had speech therapy twice, twice a week and only received it once a week, then we would have a plan on how we would make that up. We could do it during ESY. The therapists could do it additionally early in the morning. There's various ways they can do that, but that's done by the IEP team meeting. They discuss that, determine what services are needed to be made up, and then make a plan for making them up. And they could also be made up during extended school year. In our, for our gifted policies and procedures, we have to have a plan on how we address students who are in the underrepresented categories, low SES and LEP. So our data shows that all, all gifted students are 5.6% of our students are gifted, 3%, 0.3% of LEP students are gifted, and 4% of low SES students are gifted. So the goal is to raise that by 1% annually. And so our gifted program specialists and a team developed our gifted matrix, which is more encompassing of the student as a whole, as opposed to just an IQ score. And so it's an IQ plus gifted characteristics. There's apparent portion, there's student product, academic performance, and all of that. So there's a form that they fill out when they're doing eligibility for students who are in the underrepresented category for gifted. And those are the main areas that were addressed. Have any questions about those, do you have any?
Do you have any questions or comments?
Well, not being an ESE person, I'm not really sure what questions I need to ask. I'm just going to be really honest with you.
But if ever, if questions ever do arise, I mean, I have an open door. You can call me anytime.
So I, I'd like to, I just, can we talk a little bit about the restraints and how, how that's now working? And then you had seclusion in there. So can you just kind of go through with us what that looks like?
And Ms. McCall, I was going to ask the same question because you specifically said we're restraining too many students.
Yes.
And that was a direct quote. So I wanted to ask.
That was my big red flag.
I did, yeah, okay. So restraints are supposed to be used only in circumstances where the student is in danger of harming themselves or someone else. So before they get to the escalated point of needing restraint, we need to try to do a good job of de-escalating the student. And that's what our training is all about, de-escalation. And then if it gets to the level of needing a restraint, then that's where it goes. So I don't know, we, we look at the data monthly and we're, we're starting to analyze this year's data to make plans for next year. There's, so there's various programs out there for restraint alternative programs, like blocking systems and things like that, that we may look into to try to reduce that. It just may be additional training for deans and APDs and the school crisis team. Right now, our behavior specialist train the school crisis team. And there may be, if there's schools where it's higher than other schools, we may need to provide additional training in those areas. A seclusion is when a student is in danger of harming themselves or others and they're basically too big to restrain. So there's a seclusion timeout room. They're monitored in there and they're given time, they get to go in there to de-escalate their behavior. And it's only used at Hillcrest School. We don't use it anywhere else.
Now, you said there's an increase in the restraints and seclusion?
There's not an increase. So, and let me be clear on that. There's not an increase and there, I believe there's been a very small decrease, but there's still, compared to other districts, we restrain too many students.
And I know we...
Percentage is high.
We've seemed to, I think everybody has a shortage of ESE specialists, ESE trained teachers. And I, and I understand we're, we're training and retraining and all. I, I guess I kind of question, maybe from a recruitment standpoint, we need to, I know, I'm sure we are, but from a recruitment standpoint, we need to be going and recruiting students who are very, very interested in ESE and being that career path that they're wanting to choose. Because this is an opinion, so bear with me on this opinion, and I hope this doesn't sound derogatory in any way, but newer trainings in educational undergraduate, graduate level trainings have evolved.
Yes, they have.
And so if the average time that our current ESE teachers and, and folks in that department and then those teachers around were trained 20, 30 years ago, it, it takes some, some retraining and retraining and retraining on, on the way things are just done now differently. And so I, I think that needs to be a focus for recruiting, obviously recruiting students.
A good focus would be if we could get dual certified teachers too.
Sure.
That's always helpful.
Well, Ms., Ms. Campbell went to the training and I was going to go there too. I know we have to do annual training, correct?
Correct. Yes, there's annual training.
So if we're doing annual training, shouldn't that encompass some of the newer strategies, newer technologies?
We do annual, sorry, didn't mean to...
And, and let me ask the question with this, because I have issues with training if it's just read and sign.
I agree.
I, I like to see the practical type training. So how is our training for this? And are we encompassing the newer strategies and technologies with that?
The initial training for restraint and seclusion is a two-day training. First day is de-escalation. Second day is the physical restraint portion of it, and it is face-to-face. I mean, it's, it's hand, it's hand-to-hand in the physical restraint section. And there is follow-up. So once they get their initial training, they have to have a, a follow-up every year. And then if there are specific pockets where the training needs more job embedded training, more practical application, then that happens as well from the behavior specialist at the school or behavior analyst at the school.
I may interrupt, Madam Vice Chair, and to Board Member Cummings' point, Ms. Campbell's point, could you talk a little bit more about that training? Because as I understand the training, have been through that before, most of the time is on the identification of the behaviors that are occurring with students to de-escalate. I heard you say day one, day two. But the emphasis is on how to prevent the restraint. So can you talk a little bit more about that so the Board is aware of what that actually looks like and the intent of that training?
Okay.
And the portion that gets to the, the physical nature, which is actually not the majority of the training? Can you talk a little bit more about that, Ms. Miller? Thank you.
So the de-escalation training teaches the, the people who are in the training how to recognize triggers, to recognize when a student may be starting to escalate, and then specific things they can do to de-escalate that student. There are verbal things that they can do. There's distraction, there's cool break, give them breaks. There's all kinds of interventions or strategies they can use to help with the de-escalation. But it's a focus on that. And when we provide trade, we have the de-escalation training for all staff member. We're doing it for bus aides coming up soon. And that's the focus of the training, is the de-escalation. And then the restraint should only be used in a crisis situation when a student is in danger of harming themselves or others.
And I...
May I jump in? Can you hear me?
Mr. Evans knows all about it. Yeah.
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. And I apologize for losing the internet connection. That's definitely on, on my end and there's nothing I can do to, to change it right now. But I'm glad that you can hear me via phone. And before every Board Member gets super concerned about our numbers of, of restraints, please also keep in mind that our district does quite a good job of honestly reporting our incidences of physical restraint. And I can say that as someone who has visited other districts and has witnessed similar incidents that weren't coded that way and weren't written up that way. So I continue to be grateful that we are being honest about our reporting by and large. And the fact that we do have a center school definitely tilts the numbers. As far as training is concerned, I was a TEACH trainer and also a CPI trainer. And Board Member Campbell is absolutely correct. There is a huge shortage of special needs educators that are willing to go into the field, willing to go into classrooms where they are going to get hit, bitten, kicked. It's a marketing issue for sure. However, it is incredibly rewarding to have a volatile student begin to turn it around. And it goes deeper than teaching de-escalation techniques. In the end, it's all about prevention. We don't want kids to escalate and we want to set up the environment for success, which is a different culture building that, that we still are, are working on. And, and that's very important. So before, again, we got overly concerned about our, our numbers, I just wanted to explain those, those couple of, of points.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thor. And, and I would like to, one of the things that, especially now that we have the hubs, and Dr. Goett and I have had this conversation, I think that, that all staff, not just ESE, but all staff need some sensitivity and awareness training when we have ESE children at the schools. Because sometimes the situations around them and people not knowing how to be sensitive to it and aware of it, sometimes that, that does exacerbate the escalation of their behavior. So I would love to see some sensitivity and awareness training for all staff that can then work with their students on if we have an autistic hub and, and what, what that looks like. And to have our, our, our students and our staff more aware of things like that. I just think that would help all the way around. And I, you know, my son was the first class at Maplewood Elementary. He was the first class of fifth grade at Maplewood and had, had not been around many ESE children. But because they were together and they partnered Matthew, especially the fifth graders, with the ESE students, he has a whole different perspective on ESE. So I just, I truly believe that, again, part of our culture on acceptance, that it needs, it really needs to be a part of the training for all of our staff.
So Ms. McCall, you're, you're totally preaching to the choir on language that I've been using all along. And I've spoken about this multiple times and you may not be aware of this, Ms. Miller. My sister is developmentally and intellectually disabled. She's non-verbal. And so I grew up kind of understanding and I know she ruled her elementary school and would crawl into her principal's chair and she, she definitely ruled that school. But in my high school setting, we had peer tutors that would go into her classrooms. And frankly, that's a great recruiting tool. Talking high school students going in and actually working, similarly to what Ms. McCall's talking about, the elementary school level with Maplewood. I do think that exposure to those who are different than us in all walks of life is incredibly important to a well-rounded, good-character, high-integrity student. And so however we can start implementing those kinds of things in our schools, I would love that.
And Madam Vice Chair, if I may, I had a conversation with Ms. Deanna Benell.
Oh, yes.
Yes, Monday, actually. She is one of our amazing behavior specialists.
Analysts.
Analysts, thank you. I always get, I get that wrong and I don't want to offend anybody. She's one of our analysts who conducts training and has for many, many years in the district. And so I spoke with her directly and she is actually working right now on a plan to incorporate some of the additional trainings that, that they are seeing out in all of our schools. So I want to thank the team who, of trainers who are doing that work and pulling that together so we can...
An amazing team.
Get more of that done this spring and into summer.
And Ms. Miller, I, I know this isn't a new concept because you probably, I remember being at Hammett Bowen and when we became a hub unit, that is...
I remember the student that we...
Yeah, yes. But, uh, you know, I remember our entire school in the summer, at some point, we had those trainings and we had TEACH training. Everybody was on board. So this is not anything new and it may already be happening and we're just...
Awareness trainings from the ESE specialists.
Yeah. So I'm thinking this may, or may not, maybe it, we haven't been doing it, but I do know in the past that we have done that and, and...
Yes, they have.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, ma'am, Vice Chair.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Vice Chair Thrower, I mean, Vice Chair King, you're absolutely right. And it's, it is all about creating a, a culture and it is all about training. We, I've actually worked with Deanna Benell for years doing paraprofessional training because a lot of times in our self-contained classrooms, the paraprofessional is the steady person and, and ESE teachers will come and go because it is so incredibly challenging. And it, the, the training does make all the difference. The, the training and the support makes all the difference and that is a, a school-wide initiative. You know, our special needs students need to learn how to function in the real world because if you're still hitting and kicking and climbing into the principal's chair, you know, you're not going to have the kinds of opportunities that everyone deserves to, to have when they get out of school. And so it really is everyone's job to embrace them and, and help bring them along. And, and that truly is creating that culture because in the end, our special needs students, our goals are the same, you know, to help them be as functional as possible upon graduation. So it's, it's all, it is an ongoing challenge and you're right, it's nothing new. But I love the renewed focus on, on training and, and having it be very valuable and appropriate training being conducted by the folks that are in the trenches doing that work. I think that's going to go a long way towards encouraging ESE teachers to come to Marion County and, and building their skill sets.
Nice, Vice Chair.
Thank you. I was going to say, Ms. River Cummings. I was going to come right back to you.
And I, and I think, I, I like all this discussion that we're talking about. I see things a little bit from a different eye, not that I disagree with anything that's being said. I agree with everything that's been said. I look at it from the perspective where Ms. Thor has talked about prevention and we talked about the escalation. The prevention and the escalation have to be hand in hand because if you're not, if they're not hand in hand, I see there being a liability issue. I know, coming from my field, that whenever we were able to prevent things from ever jumping off, it never got to the escalation part, there's a, a lower chance of people getting hurt trying to put restraints on, trying to seclude these kids or anything. And so I, I'm praying that we will have a, a bigger emphasis on the training part of this because it's going to help us as far as our liability district-wide because we have these hubs all over the county. And you have different types of kids in many of these different schools. And I, I wouldn't, I would not want a kid to get hurt with us trying to put restraints on them or seclude them. And I definitely wouldn't want a staff member hurt, you know, trying to put restraints or, or seclude these kids. Some of these kids, I was at school yesterday, an eighth grader, she was as tall as Mark Villanillo. And, and I was, I was looking up to this, this eighth grade girl and I'm saying, wow, what, what does she eat? So, you know, imagine, and I have a special needs son and living with him every day. And I understand that there's, they have some different dynamics and some of them are extremely strong, extremely strong. So it can put the person in a, in a situation where they can get hurt. So we need to definitely, prevention, de-escalation at the same time. It has to be jointly fitted together.
I do appreciate you bringing up that point about prevention. And I'm glad that Vice, I mean Chair Thrower brought that up because she was, she is a trainer and she knew to put that in. I'm not actually a trainer. I'm just trying to give you the information. But prevention is also part of that training.
Yeah.
Yep.
I had two other quick questions. You mentioned that you're looking at this year's data next week. So this kind of is just an administrative question. Perhaps if we're just now looking at this year's data, perhaps this report actually would have been better suited to be a little bit later if that, I just...
Well, I mean...
I mean, I'm just, that's kind of just an administrative... I mean, that's kind of just an administrative question.
Can I speak to that?
Absolutely.
So it's opened up in September, October for us to review all the policies and procedures from the previous year. But we have until about Christmas break to get everything updated based on the data from previous years. Then we submit it and then the state looks at it and we get it back around this time of year. So every year, we're a year behind. So next year in September, we'll be addressing this year's data. Although we look at this year's data monthly, we have an idea of where we're going and it's about the same as where we've been. So we need to look at different strategies, different trainings to make sure that that starts to improve.
Okay. And then my second question is actually kind of on the opposite side, I guess, of also still following in ESE. I'm talking about the gifted information and I know that I've talked to Dr. Gullett about this. How close are we to potentially a uniform assessment of all students?
I did bring Viviana Prieto, our gifted program specialist. She's in the lobby and I would like her to come speak to that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Would love to see Ms. Prieto.
That's her expertise, for sure.
Oh, I know. She was my son's first teacher.
Oh, amazing. Our house scene is amazing and we're working hard.
And while we're waiting for her to come in, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I think we also need to keep in mind that because we do our best to serve very, very difficult and volatile kids, we have kids coming in from all over the country and the world, and some of you may not know that, to attend Hillcrest School, for example. And they come to us because they know their kids are difficult and haven't been successful anywhere else. So I don't think our goal needs to be, or it's realistic to say we are going to eliminate all restraints and seclusions because it can literally save someone's life. But we want to do better always and always be striving to minimize those as much as possible. So I just wanted to make that point as well as a tribute to all of our ESE teachers that have hung in there. Hillcrest School is incredible. If you haven't visited and taken a tour, please do. And it will give you that bird's eye view of what it really takes in the day-to-day and the type of culture that it takes to serve our most challenging students.
And because of that, I'm not certain if there's a way for us to actually have that
segmented out with that in this report. Maybe it's just in the board report and not actually in our formal report to the state. But to say of these hundred whatever, this number or this percentage was at our center based school.
You have the data by school base, yeah, by school.
That would be helpful just to see from that perspective. That's a good point, Ms. Thrower. Thank you.
Welcome. Well, for example, Hillcrest is the only school that has seclusion, that uses seclusion anymore. So all of those seclusions would be attributable to Hillcrest. I have my own thoughts about that, but that's a conversation for another time.
And all three, I wanted to mention also that all three of the seclusions that occurred could be one student.
Correct.
That's right. And often likely is.
Right.
All right, Ms. Campbell, you want to restate your question?
Oh, sure. Yeah, hi, Ms. Prieto. Good to see you. I wanted to ask specifically, I talked to Dr. Gullett about a uniform assessment of all, I think potentially second graders is kind of what we had talked through. And I just wondered how close we are to potentially rolling that out within the district.
Well, we have certain things that we've talked about and now it's just kind of finalizing, I think. We're waiting on Dr. Gullett to make the final decision on which one and to move along with that.
Absolutely. So good morning again. Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the board. Ms. Campbell, to your question, yes, we met, we met early actually this year upon my arrival and we've talked about this. And so looking at the funding, so we would probably start potentially with, if we get approval from Title I schools to be able to do that, that's part of our plan is moving forward to make sure that we're reaching all students and utilizing some of those funds that were not earmarked for this year, but hopefully for the upcoming.
Question. What would be the rationale in waiting to second grade for the assessment instead of doing it earlier?
Well, I know, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Prieto. This is your expertise.
Research-based, just because it's a standardized assessment that you're doing with the students, it would be at the class, maturity level, a lot of it. And it's research-based says that that's one of the best times to do it. So we go with the publishers and the research and gifted education. We don't want to always want to throw them into an IQ score or IQ setting if they're not ready for it. Sometimes it's an individual basis, but something that big, we'd have to take an average of what's the best time.
So if we're looking at the second grade, I mean, I think sometimes you can identify certain things earlier.
Oh, yes, of course, yes.
And have an assessment tool that allows you to make an assessment.
And we'll still continue to have those individualized ones.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. What a universal screening does in second grade, to your question, Reverend Cummings, is that it provides us an opportunity to recognize all students that might not be recognized in traditional ways, especially some of our underrepresented populations. So making sure we're reaching all students. And so it does not mean and does not exclude other opportunities for identification and testing at all.
And when we pick one of those assessments, we always look on the research, the ones that are best, that have been more successful in identifying underrepresented students. So because those are the ones that are the hidden ones, like we want to make sure we hit, so.
And while you're here, Ms. Prieto, so I know we talked to the point of ESE specialists and certified, ESE dual-certified, all that, we have a shortage of that. You want to talk about a shortage of gifted as well?
Yes, we're right in there. Yes, we're right in there. Yeah, we'd love to get more, the dual endorsement going on and all the way up, all the way up through high school so that every teacher that every gifted student might have understands all the characteristics that come along with gifted.
Do you still have schools without a gifted teacher on them currently?
Yes.
How many?
If you don't know the answer, don't guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't.
I was just counting.
You can't think prepared for that.
It's a hub. It's a hub.
I'm sorry, she and I have had this conversation several times.
I know, it's just a matter, so...
She has a basis idea, I'm sure.
Approximately.
One is a hub that offers services to three schools and the other one at the elementary level, and the other one is a hub at the high school level that services two high schools. So that's what I meant, how would I put that? That's what I was thinking.
Okay. You were guessing and I was like, you know, and sometimes you're not prepared to answer every question.
Ms. Prieto and I have had this conversation multiple times, so I'm sorry if I felt that you felt I put you on the spot.
No, no.
I know that she's had to sub multiple times because we don't have gifted teachers in schools. And so she's filling in a lot because we have gifted students where we don't have gifted instructors.
We also have a ESE coordinator who's gifted endorsed who has subbed as well.
Sure. So I mean, we're having a shortage on both sides in this department.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Miller, do you have anything else to add or you're good?
Nope, I'm great. I'm great. Thank you very much, everybody. It's hard not to be there.
Thank you. Sorry you're not here too. All right, is there any public comment? With there being none, we're going to move on to board concerns and Ms. McCall, we'll begin with you.
I don't really have any today. I will say that last night I attended Bellevue High School's choral concert and it was very different, but they did a fabulous job. They were all in choral singing masks. In the gymnasium, they were distanced six feet apart, which is, they did an incredible job under a very difficult circumstance. And it was, it was really beautiful. The teacher there, Ariel, has done a great job and I'm hoping that they can get back to normal singing soon. But I wanted to congratulate them for really trying hard because it was a difficult situation, but a beautiful, beautiful concert. So singing in a gymnasium from a vocalist is one of the hardest places you could ever sing that in a football stadium, playing the, singing the National Anthem because of the echoes. So they did a great job. She has really taken the music program a long way.
Nice.
So that's really all I have.
Thank you. It was nice to hear that. Reverend Cummings?
I was glad to, good morning again to everyone. I was glad to hear the update from our superintendent about these vaccinations for our staff. I've been getting a lot of questions about when and how and where. So just tell them to stay tuned. It's coming, it's closer than you think. But please, please respond to the surveys. The surveys are going to help us get the shots in the arms a lot faster. So please do that and keep being safe, keep doing the things that we need to do to stay safe, so.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell?
Unfortunately, I missed the Bellevue concert because I was actually attending the middle school basketball tournament. So right now we have, the middle schools have been participating also in athletics and I'm very grateful to Mr. Jody Phillips and all the middle school athletic directors who also figured out how to make this work for them. They've been playing intramural games and then their tournament season has started now. So the Osceola Boys and Girls took on the Fort King Boys and Girls. Fort King was victorious in both meetings and then Liberty hosted. And so they were all over the county last night, middle school basketball tournaments. So I'm grateful for that and that's where I was. I was trying to get to the Bellevue concert. I'm real excited, we have a show choir. It's kind of a little passion of mine. So I'm hoping next time they perform, I'll be able to be present. Additionally, congratulations and good luck to the Forest Men's Basketball Team who will be playing tonight against Bartow. I think it's at 6:00 PM down in the Lakeland area. They left yesterday. And it's just exciting for any one of our county teams to be in the Final Four in any sport. I mean, that's just a really exciting thing to have. And the final thing I was going to mention to you this week, and I've sent this to Elena and Dr. Gullett if you guys want to see a copy of it, but this week, two other board members in two other counties and I sent an email, well, first of all, in the FSBA Finance Forum, we learned all about the calculations and how funding happens. And one of the disproportionate areas that a representative from Polk County as well as a representative from Lake County and I found in transportation is that we are allocated funding based on the number of students that desire, or students that are able to be transported. However, there's no calculation at all for square mileage. And personally, we all felt that that was disproportionate, being the fifth, sixth, and 16th largest counties in the state, that whenever you think of the IRS calculating mileage reimbursements, they don't count the number of people in the car, they count how many miles you traveled. And so we have, the three of us from Polk, Lake, and Marion have sent emails to Senator Baxley and Senator Stargell specifically about that. And that email went out this week. So if you'd like a copy of that, I sent it to Elena and she can forward it on to you. I just wanted to make you aware of that. Grateful to the FSBA Finance Forum for, you know, giving us the education so that we can learn those kinds of things. Not sure where that's going to go. I mean, it may just, you know, fall on deaf ears, but nevertheless, we did make that effort. So that's it.
I appreciate you making that effort because that has, if you talk to Teresa about that, that is a big concern and so...
Well, and I saw Senator Baxley Thursday evening, actually at the CEP's event for Representative Henson or Representative Harding. And so I said, hey, by the way, you know, I have this. And he said, well, you know, Senator Stargell from Polk County, who's the other county that definitely chimed in with me, they're the fifth largest, we're sixth largest. And he said, well, she's actually in charge of the allocation. So if you can get Polk County on board with you. And Lisa Miller was very grateful to be a part of that, as was Molly Cunningham in Lake County. So our two senators that represent the three counties, we'll see if we get anywhere with it, but...
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Superintendent, did you have anything to add?
I have nothing additional. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Nicole, Ms. Pressley, do you have anything? Okay, and I am just going to publicly thank Mr. McGowan and his team. A couple of days ago, we received those quick checks, just, you know, of all the schools and it helps as a board member give me a really good pulse of what's happening, I believe, you know. And I liked the charts with the graph where it showed where the district and stuff. It was just good and when you look at it, you realize a lot of work in detail goes into this and even where they've identified, you know, the schools that may need some improvement and what they're working on and stuff like that. And I know it's a lot of time and I just want to publicly thank him for that because it's good work.
So Kelly, can I also, if you all haven't gotten your power app on your phones, because what's great is if you really use it, every time you go to a school, all you have to do is hit, pull the school up and all of that is there. So I really appreciate Mr. McGowan, the technology team. Kevin, I'm sure you had something to do with that. It is an amazing app where you don't have to keep things in notebooks anymore. So I want to thank the team for that because I use it all the time.
And if I could, Board Member McCall, so if there's anything else that you'd like added, I think I shared this with you all individually, please let me know. I just, having an app was really important to me and I thought it would be helpful to the board. So I keep adding, asking the team to add things in there. And so if there's anything that you think is missing, please, please let me know.
Yeah, it's very, very nice.
As soon as I got it, went on to see if it had been updated yet, but it will be, it will be.
And as a reminder, enrollment's in there as well. So those reports that come, all of that is being filtered into that enrollment data.
Okay, all right. Well, with no more comments, our...
Actually, I have a quick couple of things.
Oh, Ms. Thrower, I'm sorry, I forgot. Ms. Thrower!
I know, I know. It's so difficult to be virtual. And I would like to say, tip my virtual hat to Vice Chair King for stepping in for me today. I was concerned sharing that, you know, anything can happen and obviously something did and I've only been able to communicate with my voice and not visually. So thank you very much, Vice Chair King. I really appreciate it. And yes, I agree that the information, you know, that we got from Mr. McGowan, just so user-friendly and so much hard work goes into making the business of Marion County Public Schools run. So thanks again to everyone for making that happen. And I love what you said, Board Member Campbell, about transportation and the mileage piece because if we can solve our transportation issues and refine them and tame them, it's going to make a huge difference in our services. So great stuff and I'm definitely willing to help advocate for that. So thank you for the email and I'll look forward to reading it. And then just finally, I participated in the Department of Health call yesterday and was so excited, you know, the collaboration between Mark Lander and Preston Boland and our district continues to create opportunities to take as best care of our employees as we possibly can offer. And I'm grateful to our governor for prioritizing our 50s and up. I hope that as the vaccine becomes more widely available, that every school employee, regardless of their age, will quickly be able to get access to being vaccinated should they so choose. So it is all about relationships and partnerships. Thank you to all of you and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower, and safe travels. Ms. McCall has...
One thing, and I'm so sorry, I can't believe I forgot this, but I did want everybody to know that Senator Thurston filed a bill, Senate Bill 886, which includes language that would pause negative effects of the accountability system following the disrupted school years. The education, the Senate Education Committee, and I watched that meeting, it was Monday or Tuesday, and they did approve moving forward with that Senate bill. So it's a long way from home, from home base, but that is the first step. As far as I know, there has not been a companion House bill filed yet, but probably at some point will be. So that is good news. It tells me they are listening. They had some excellent questions that must be addressed for this accountability bill, but what I was pleased with was the fact that they are beginning, that they are listening. But the questions that were being asked at the committee, the committee were the exact questions that needed to be asked. So stay tuned. I will keep you updated on information as session continues. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you provided that update because everybody's very interested.
Yeah. So encouraging.
And then, of course, the letter that the superintendent forwarded from the Superintendents' Association is another good indicator. So they're hearing from a lot of people, so stay tuned. But I'm hoping it's the start of some good news. So stay tuned.
Thank you so much. Okay, I was going to adjourn, but I have one more thing to add and that is there is a request for a shade meeting for March 10th to review the draft proposal of the 2021-22 local MOUs. So are we good with that? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, well, with no further business, our meeting is adjourned at 9:50 AM.